Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the November 18th meeting of the St. Mary's County Planning Commission. Hope everybody signed up on the sheets that were out in the hallway this evening. There was one if you were speaking, the other sheet was in case any further information needs to be sent to you regarding these cases, please sign up. Our meeting is being recorded for the public record. Any comments made by anyone present must be recorded as part of the record. Therefore, if you have anything to say, you must come up to one of the microphones provided. Your comments cannot be recorded and placed in the record unless they are directed to a microphone. You are to direct your statements, questions, or responses to the board only, and we will direct them to the appropriate person for an answer. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and please speak up close to the microphone. Anyone testifying or asking questions during our public hearings will be required to take the oath. And thank you for your cooperation. On our agenda this evening, after review and approval of the November 4th minutes, our one public hearing this evening is CSP 24-0018 for the Riverside Townhouse Development. And their request this evening is an approval of a concept site plan for 42 townhouse units, which is permitted use type within the MXM zoning district. After that, we'll go over any new business, followed by adjournment. This time, I'll let the board members introduce themselves, starting to the left.
Good evening, Lynn Dellahey.
Joe St. Clair.
Howard Thompson.
Joe Van Kirk.
Jay Cousineau.
John Brown.
Michael Brown.
Also with us, taking care of business right here, is our new Deputy Director of Land Use and Growth Management, Brandy Glenn. Congratulations on that. Our Senior Planning Specialist this evening is Megan Higgs-Carter. Our video media producer this evening is Amy Carter. From St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission, we have Anna Wells. And from the Department of Public Works and Transportation, we have Jesse Harper. And I think that's it, and Michael. Okay. Did everybody have a chance to review the minutes from November 4th? Any corrections? Do you have a motion to accept?
Sell move.
Have a motion from Mr. John Brown?
Right.
And a second from?
Second.
Mr. Cousineau. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Thank you, Mr. St. Clair. Okay. Moving right along. We'll go into our case before we get started on that case this evening. Anybody that's going to be speaking, I think I have one person on my signup sheet, but the applicants theirself, if you'd stand at this time, I'll get everybody sworn in. And in case you want to speak later, and you do, I'll ask everybody as they come up, and I can swear you in then. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. Good evening, Deputy.
Good evening. I don't have a presentation.
Okay. Mr. Kudjuski. Hall, you're right on up here first thing. When we left off, you had a few things you were looking into. We'll give you a chance to bring anything else you are tonight, we're still in your part of the hearing, and we'll follow that up with public testimony.
So with new members of the board, I thought we'd do just a brief recap of kind of what we presented.
You can do so, I've asked the board members to review everything. Everybody reviewed it on tape.
If you want, we can skip that and get right into it.
Does anybody, well, you want to hit the highlights? You got any highlights that you want to hit?
Okay. Well, Jeff, Martis here.
Basically, the highlights of it was that we have the planned site development of 42 townhouses, utilizing a single right-in, right-out entrance directly accessing Maryland 235. The State Highway Administration has approved the plan and concept, and St. Mary's County Department of Public Works and Transportation has recommended approval of the adequate public facilities report. I did want to note that State Highway and their concept approval of that, and their review of the detailed site plan that may result in off-site mitigation or improvements, or additional improvements to the right-of-way. And I just wanted to also note that the owner has offered a fee and lieu payment towards the Maryland 235 and FDR Boulevard intersection improvements. Some of the other things that the, we are addressing the forest conservation with onsite retention and proposed fees and lieu. Stormwater management will be addressed through environmental site development. We're proposing to use microbiome bioswales and submerged gravel wetlands. Additionally, we will evaluate the site at time of detailed site plan to ensure that the post-development runoff will, post-development runoff rate will be less than or equal to the pre-development condition. The site will be served by public water and sewer systems. Lastly, just wanted to note that the, this project is, we don't have any requests for any variances from the St. Mary's County zoning ordinance. And the proposed density of 42 units is lower than the maximum allowed of 25 units per acre on this site, which would approximately be about 118. So with that, I'll pass it over to Joe.
Thank you. So as you know, we were here last time, and a couple of questions arise, the main one being the potential to access the site from by-the-mill right-of-way, the 30-foot right-of-way on the north side of the site. So we left the meeting and began doing some due diligence to determine if that was feasible. The county attorney's office determined that the right-of-way, that St. Mary's County does not own the 30-foot right-of-way. It's shown on several plats that date back to 1947, but appears the right-of-way was never deeded to the county. So we contracted with Tri-County Title to prepare title abstract and determine who does own that 30-foot strip. So while that was going on, we also contacted and met with the adjoining developer that has an application in for the title car wash. We met with them, exchanged plans, and tried to determine if there was a way to work together to create a roadway along the back within that 30-foot right-of-way that could serve both properties. Finally, the applicant also contacted the adjoining property on the north side of the right-of-way, which is the church property. And they were actually very willing to participate, and seemed to want to, you know, either sell or be compensated for any future, any right-of-way widening or easements that we needed. So that was, you know, kind of sent us on the path to develop a schematic design for that area. And this is what we had come up with. So again, leaving the past meeting, creating a roadway using a portion of a 30-foot wide right-of-way by-the-mill way, and then also area from the church needed for the roadway, and then grading on the other side. And then working with the titleway adjoining parcel to see how they could access from that new roadway. So we developed this layout and grading plan, and we're proceeding, you know, in that route. And then about the last, end of October, we came back and the owners of the 30-foot right-of-way rejected the applicant's offer, and went further in saying that they did not wish to entertain any future offers for that property. So that pretty much put us dead in the water for, you know, utilizing that 30-foot right-of-way for any access to our project. That brings us back here today with, is there, how do I go back? Sorry. There you go, got it. With our original concept layout, utilizing again 235 for our main access. But we did incorporate, you know, understanding some of the comments and concerns from the last hearing. So one, we've added four additional spaces, parking spaces onsite. That puts us eight over the requirement. We have shown preliminarily a six-foot privacy fence around the adjacent commercial parcel, the dentist office, for additional screening. Basically, what we're showing in red. And then we've extended the shoulder improvement for the length of our property frontage. Understanding that, you know, the location of the bus stop is a major concern. I also, I spoke to St. Mary's County Public Schools, showed them this plan. And they're basically saying, you know, obviously, this isn't, you know, the most desired location, but they do have stops on 235. And if there was a residence adjoining this parcel, they would have a stop on 235 if there was children in that residence. What they went on to further say is typically, they stay in the far-right lane, which I think in this case would be the merge lane, with their lights on and stop traffic on 235. They would also consider pulling off on the shoulder, using the extended shoulder, and not stopping traffic. Again, that's something that they will discuss in-house, and determine what's the safest solution for that area. I think, you know, I guess the other, I think there was some confusion, and there was confusion maybe on my part as well. As for the lanes along 235, so this graphic shows what's actually out there. We have the, you know, acceleration coming from 24 on to 235, plus the merge lane that gets us down from three travel lanes down to two along our property frontage. And then the shoulder improvement along, all the way in front of the dentist office in front of our site. So we come today, again, as Jeff said, we have all the approvals from the various agencies needed for concept site plan approval. We took what was said here, and really went through the process to try to create by-the-mill way and access this site from that proposed roadway, and just quite honestly, came up to a dead end. So we're back here today, slight modifications to the previous concept plan, and asking for your approval. That's it.
Okay. Does anybody have any?
Yes.
I have a quick question.
Okay.
When the gentleman spoke, he mentioned there could be some additional intersection improvements. What was you talking about?
So I guess as it goes through the review process at the next stage with the state, they, I guess, do a more detailed thorough review of it, and they could require, you know, additional improvements along the frontage, and, you know, potentially, I guess, I don't know, that they would assess the intersection at that point?
I would say more XL-Dcel.
Yeah.
This is going to require an access permit from State Highway Administration. Part of that process, they review it, they'll say, here's what you need to do to have a safe access here. And our proposal was to extend the shoulder up to our driveway. And as a result of the hearing that we had last time, we heard some concern and questions about could that be extended further out, the shoulder improvement? So we're going to extend that to the property limit to the northwest limit of the property frontage. That would provide, that would be a 17-foot?
Yes.
17-foot shoulder area that can legally be used for XL-Dcel into the property, bus, if the bus, if the school system determines to use the shoulder. If they don't, they would be in that, in that lane and stopping traffic. But that's what the State Highway Permit refers to.
But I wonder why, if they were going to do that, make you extend, I mean, you've already got the Dcel and XL lanes to the length of your property. Looks like if they were going to do that any further, they would tell you now.
Generally not. It's, that's generally through the access permit process. In a former part of my career, I was division chief for the State Highway Access Permits Division. So they'll go through this process, they'll tell you guys, yes, we're okay with the property. We approved the traffic study. And then when we submit for the access permit, they'll take a deeper look at the access itself and say, alright, you need, you know, make sure you have 17-foot lane, you know, widening X feet on either side of the access. But that's where those details, in the actual access permit process.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Would that, that happen before the project or after the project?
That would happen after the approval here, and then we submit the access permit. We go for building permits and site grading, access permit, and that's when that would typically happen.
It would happen through the major site plan review process. So certainly before any construction started.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? While I still have you, let me go over a few things. So basically, we've lost the right-of-way to the rear that we were hoping for. And out front, it's going to stay the same. Changes are going to stay the same as what you bought in last time. You're just going to extend up from the entryway that y'all have. How many feet did you say you would come up? 17 feet?
Well, 17 feet wide, but we're extending that shoulder along the whole frontage. What is that, 150 to 200 feet?
Yeah.
But that's not going to be used, I'll say, as an XL-Dcel. That's just.
We would not recommend to the state that we stripe it as an XL-Dcel, just as a shoulder lane that's not marked, but can be used for XL and Dcel. And that's legal in the state of Maryland.
Sounds kind of iffy to me. Anyway.
But we'll do, ultimately, we'll do what they tell us to do.
Yeah. Okay. And I know you said, next to the dentist office, you had taken care of that. Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. They don't answer questions from Lugum. We have to ask Lugum questions. I have a question about the, for this property, it says the minimum is three acres, but it's 4.75 for this that they have?
Okay.
Is that what?
Right. For townhouses, the minimum has to be three acres, and they meet that.
Okay, any other questions?
One more. Structure length, one-third, less than 130, it says this is maximum. Tell me what that is.
So the entire structure, the stick of townhomes, the max length is 130, it can't be longer. Their proposed structure length is 120. For the stick. So what is, you have like six?
20-foot units.
Yeah, six 20-foot units was the max we had for any of them. So the maximum we had on our plan was 120 feet. Any one building? Sorry.
Can't even hear you with this.
Yeah, please speak up to the microphones as close as you can, everybody. Okay. Any other questions from any board members?
Is the internal roads remaining private in here?
Yes.
They'll all be private? And are all the units, all 42 or 44, whatever it is, 20-foot, everything's 20?
Everything right now is 20, yes. When you get into detailed site plan, there may be a mix of some slightly wider units on the exterior. But right now, they're all 20-foot wide units.
Anybody else have anything?
I have one more. Visitor parking, there's only four extra parking spaces in this development?
We're showing a total of eight now.
Eight?
Yes, sir. We had four when we came here last time, and understanding the, sort of the comment before, we were able to, we're showing four additional, at least conceptually, on this revised plan near the pump station.
Is that the red block?
Can you guys see the plan I'm looking at?
Is that the red block?
The red block, yeah. So the idea is what we did change, we highlighted in red on this exhibit.
One more question. That brings the question of parking on the street. Is that going to be up to the HOA? In other words, unknown at this point.
There's sort of limited areas where people could park on the street because of the driveways, but I understand your concern.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open it up with public testimony. I'll call the names that I have on the list. I know I had one individual get sworn in, but if somebody else has anything they want to say, I'll ask you if you've taken the oath, and take it from there. You can either use that microphone or come to the desk over there, whichever one you're more comfortable at.
Take the desk.
And could you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, thank you. I'm Penny Dennis. I am the Church Administrator at Our Father's House Assembly of God Church. The physical address is 45020 Patuxent Beach Road, which is California, Maryland. I wanted to bring before you guys my concern today that we actually have never been contacted about anything that has been happening here. Anything that we have found out about the meetings is by happenstance, or somebody's let us know, and then I've gone online to get the information. In reviewing the information, I looked at the certified mail receipts, and I noticed that information has been sent to Patuxent River AOG Holding Company, and the holding company owns the property that we sit on. But it was sent to CO, the American Tower Corporation. There is a cell tower on our property. That cell tower company leases the land that it's sitting on, but it does not own the land. And so that is not the address that is to be used. The address they sent it to was 10 Presidential Way, somewhere in Massachusetts. And so we've never received any information. And I wanted to put it on record that the holding company, the address to receive anything, is PO Box 828, California, Maryland, 20619. So my question, I have two questions based on comments that were made tonight. Who did you speak to saying that the church was willing to participate in sale property? Because that was not us. And the other question is, who did you determine, because I was unclear, who did you determine to be the owner of the 30-foot right-of-way? So those are my concerns and my questions.
Okay, hold on one second, we'll see if we can get that answered for you.
So we determined the owner of the right-of-way to be personal representative of Margaret Elizabeth Stevens.
Okay.
And I'd like to have the applicant discuss who he contacted at the church. I wasn't directly involved in that contact.
Howard, let me ask a quick question before we get into that. Are we still legal to proceed without proper mailing notification? I mean, there's no legal person here, I don't guess.
Can you give me a second to find out?
Just to make sure that, you know.
I appreciate that, yeah.
Can you, can I go out here to make the phone call that I need to make?
Brandy, if I'm correct, that the adjoining property that we are to contact are given to us by Land Use and Growth Management?
It is, with the caveat that you're supposed to double-check those.
Okay.
Well, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just making sure we can proceed legally for you guys without the proper notification to the church.
But let me go.
You find that out. Then who was it that y'all contacted?
Well, I don't have that list in front of me, we have to go back and look at the file.
Isn't this supposed to have been returned?
Yes, yeah, they're all sent return receipt.
Not given to Lugum?
And they're sent two different ways now with USPS and.
Well, we got a copy of the mail receipts. We have, let's see, Bill and Monica Clements. Bill and Monica Clements. Bill Clements and his daughter-in-law, Michelle Bell. Three Notch Properties. Investors Acquisition Group out of Baltimore. Patuxent River AOG Holding Company. That, I take it with the address that you just said, I think that's the cell tower. Investors Acquisition Group of Reisterstown. Another one sent to them. Smeco Maryland Department of Transportation. The applicant, the applicant, the applicant, the applicant, and the applicant. Those are who we have mail receipts from. Ms. Dennis, if in fact, they have to had contacted your group, would you like to see this continued in order for you to have representation in this case tonight?
I would say yes, please.
Okay.
I guess while we'll wait, we just looked up, so, the, you know, the property address from the St. Mary's GIS to the Department of Assessments and Taxation, ESTAT, is what we use to obtain the, and verify the addresses, mailing addresses. So, when that comes up, it comes up as the tower address of Care of American Tower Corporation, 10 Presidential Way, is that Wilburn, Massachusetts, but listed as Patuxent River AOG Holding Company.
May I respond to that?
So, absolutely. But I guess that's the address that we were able to determine.
Okay.
Also point out that, you know, we also had, you know, various articles or notifications in the paper and signage along all the frontage, roadway frontage.
I'm looking through the same things y'all are. I'm just making sure.
Yeah.
Not that I doubt you.
No, I understand.
Y'all been, y'all had to pay any taxes?
The church does not have to pay taxes, and that's why this is CO, American Tower Group. They do have to pay taxes for the piece of land that they are leasing from us.
Yeah, because all the information he's talking about, I just went through it also too. Everything is addressed to the tower company. The only thing it has, I'll say, under, under facts is, it gives your premises address.
Which is different from their holdings?
Yeah. You have a mailing address and then a premises address. Premises, of course, is the Patuxent Beach Road address, and the other one is the care of the American Tower Corp. Okay. Here it comes. Drum roll, please. Yes, ma'am.
So, notice was sufficient. The address that the notification was sent to is the address that GIS has and ESTAT.
Okay.
So, if that's incorrect, the church should probably notify ESTAT that they have the wrong address.
May I respond again since she didn't hear the response earlier?
Go ahead.
That address is there because the cell tower company leases that land that it's sitting on from us, and they pay taxes on that. The church does not pay taxes on land. So, therefore, they do not have an address, that department does not have an address for us. They just have the address they need to send for the taxes.
I understand. They can only notify what we have in ESTAT. That's how the mailing list is generated.
And how do I contact someone in ESTAT or...?
If you'll leave your email address with me, I'll send that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. What were the other comments that you had then?
I believe...
I know you had concern that you weren't notified.
Just the question, again, I think they're gonna be checking into it, but just who they actually spoke with that said that the church was willing to participate in great sale, because the cell tower company certainly cannot do that. And so, I am concerned about that. And I do want to make it clear, we definitely have no intentions of wanting to hold up your project, but we just wanted to make sure that we have all the information that we need to make sure that any impact on us is, that there's not, you know, a negative impact on us.
And you don't have in your file that you have tonight who you spoke with?
I did not personally speak to him.
Or it was all, was it all mail or email correspondence?
I can't speak to that.
Okay.
Howard, I have a question for Ms. Dennis.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Had you received notification or a packet, I'm not sure what's sent out to the landowners, contiguous landowners or within certain amount of feet. What would you have done differently? Would you have, do you have legal for the church would have looked at that, or a board of directors, or how would you have handled that had you received something?
If we had, well, we actually, like I said, we got information on our own by going and downloading the information from your website and whatnot. And at this point, we know, we have not had a legal look at it. We've had one of our congregants look at site plans because he, this congregant actually works in surveying and he understands all of that, so he's given us advice. And so, most likely, if everything was in order, you know, we just, my main reason for coming here tonight was to let you know that you did not have the right address and that we need to be having information sent to us at the correct address. But then it came more of a concern when we said somebody had talked to somebody representing the church that had thought they would be, you know, they'd be willing to make some decisions on behalf of the church, and that very much concerns me because that was not us, to my knowledge. So, but other than that, I don't think we would have done anything differently tonight. It was just, we were intending just to give the correct address tonight.
I just think it should be noted on the record that Ms. Dennis is the spokesperson for the church, or I forgot the title that you had.
Church administrator.
Church administrator. And she had requested that she'd like to see a continuance. I don't know if it's up to her, but I just wanted on the record that she did not receive what they needed to receive to have it looked at by whomever would want to in the church, just so we have that noted. I understand Ms. Glenn spoke to legal, and that's, that's fine. Also, I'm just saying that's, you know, since she's the one didn't receive anything and wants a continuance, if possible, just wanted to make sure that we have that noted.
Can I ask a question? How did you know who to contact at the church if you did notify or speak to someone at the church?
Again, I didn't personally do that, so we'll have to, yeah, I have to get the applicant.
I think your applicant wants to come up. You're part of this team. Would you come up? And I believe I did get to swear you in at the beginning. Okay, well, I'll swear at you then. Raise your right hand, please.
Go up to the mic.
Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony responses and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Kurt Fowler, 171 Skipjack Road, Prince Frederick, Maryland, 20678. I'm the owner of the property. I was dealing with O'Brien Realty, and I'm not sure who they spoke with or didn't speak with, but that's who we were assigned to look into the right-of-way for us after we found out who owned it. So, I'm not sure who they spoke with. I didn't get a name.
Thank you.
To your knowledge, do you have any dealings with O'Brien Realty?
No, sir. Not to my knowledge. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'll, I'll just add, well, it is, it is public information, but we can certainly share the plans with, with you or whomever at the church that you'd like for review. And if there are any concerns, we definitely, you know, would incorporate those into the major site plan design if we just, if we do get approval to move forward. So, now that we have a name and person to contact, certainly we'll, we'll want to work with all our neighbors here.
Well, I've got all kinds of problems. I've got somebody that brought up a good point. I've got you that just said, you know, you would supply them with everything, you know, needed that you've given us to look it over. And I don't have anybody that I can ask rightly how, the direction. And I don't like the continuance word any more than you do, but I do like to do things right. And I don't even have anybody to ask if I'm doing things right tonight. So, how's anybody else feel on this?
Can I ask one more question?
Surely. You can ask all the questions you would like, Mike.
Okay. I'm looking at the adequate road, the traffic generating.
I guess...
Well, we're, we're in public testimony right now. Yeah. That was something that should have been asked before, after we closed public testimony.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can ask, I'm, I'm just trying to do things right.
Mr. Chairman, can, can I say something real quick?
Surely.
Just for the record, Lugum doesn't have an objection with a continuation, if that's how the board would like to go.
It would may. I think, I think we need to make sure that all the...
I know, I know.
All the i's are dotted, okay, and t's crossed.
May I ask a question regarding the continuance?
Yes, ma'am.
So, if there were a continuance, so, what I have so far is what you provided on your website with site plan and such. Are there, have there been any updates or revisions that we might not have seen?
We had a small revision tonight.
Yeah, that's the only revision, you know, that we're presenting tonight with the additional parking spaces, the extended shoulder improvement and the privacy fence. We certainly share this with...
And that was literally just shown tonight, right?
That's correct.
We, we've not even seen that.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, please.
And Joe, I'm sure you can also answer this. There's, there's nothing that impacts their property whatsoever.
Not under this, not under the site plan. Yeah, we're only looking at impacts if we were to build the by-the-mill road.
Right. So, the drawings that you did see already is what is still there. Yes.
So, I would like to, or adjust my comment earlier. I think we would be okay without the continuance if, again, there's not anything being requested to be done to the 30-foot right-of-way. We had seen a site plan. We had somebody look that over, and we did not have any concerns with that. It's just a matter of making sure we're getting the proper notification, information, and that the proper people are being spoken to regarding our property.
If you're saying you feel comfortable, we can move forward. We don't have to have a continuation. It is, it is within your right, though, if you don't feel comfortable, if you, if there's something you want to see. Because you weren't notified, I'll say legally, we could continue it until you get that information.
I believe that I would be okay with you all moving forward, as long as that I know that we're gonna get information about, you mentioned information about who was spoken to, and that, of course, we will make sure that the county has what our, the holding company's address is, so that any future things that come up will be sent to us properly.
Okay. Well, then I would, if we, if we do move forward, that would be in y'all's ballpark to make sure that you get in touch with them to let them know, because maybe you shouldn't even have talked to O'Brien Realty about this, this property. Okay. Okay, is there any, any other questions, ma'am?
No, no, sir.
Any comments or any questions?
We're in public testimony, so shouldn't we listen to the rest of the people who are here?
Well, I plan on it, but I gotta finish up with her first.
Didn't know if this was gonna be a determination.
If anybody, I have nobody else on the sign-in sheet I'm gonna ask as soon as Ms. Dennis is done, and then we'll move from there. Any other questions for Ms. Dennis?
No, sir.
Appreciate it, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Okay. Was there anybody else in the audience this evening that wants to speak? Yes, sir. You want to come up to the microphone? Did I get, I'm gonna go ahead and swear you in. You can go over there if you're more comfortable. Yes, sir. Raise your right hand, please. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony responses and statements you may give will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Could you give us your name and address, please?
My name is John Seisman. I own 23192 Three Notch Road, California, Maryland, 20619.
What was your last name, please?
Seisman, S.E.I.S.M.A.N.
Yes, sir. And what was your...
Thank you for hearing us. Wanted to say, my main concern is the adequate parking. I know that we've increased from four to eight. However, there's 42 townhomes. So, my question is, what happens when somebody has a Christmas party, or somebody has a Super Bowl party, and more than one, you know, car guest comes and parks? I, I'm mostly concerned about parking in my area, in my lot, and affecting my property. I know that's probably selfish, but I, I really don't want overflow from people onto my lot that will affect me. I know that the fence will be there, however, I think there's gonna be a sidewalk that will allow them to come over to my property. I just wanted to address that and see how we would go about that. The other concern that I have, which is more selfish for me and my patients, but we have a nice landscape in the back. We have a lot of wildlife. We had three deer cross this morning, a lot of trees, a lot of birds, and I'm disappointed that we're going to lose that. But like I said, that's more selfish on my part.
Are you directly next door?
Yes, sir.
Dennis' office?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Kajewski, do y'all plan on having sidewalks along 235?
Yeah, we, we currently show them. I was just asking, Mike, if, if the state would actually require it. Certainly, if the state highway does not require the sidewalk, we would not install them.
Well, the board has normally asked for sidewalks just so that in...
They do. In this case, you know, I don't know with it. They're not being sidewalk on either side. It may not be requested or necessary.
We, we can certainly take it off the plans and only put it in if the state requires it. I don't, I don't think there's any other...
I was approached by somebody that was, that spoke about the bridge, the Solomon's Bridge, that's part of St. Mary's County, about adding a sidewalk to my property because he was planning on adding sidewalks, or having sidewalks at the apartments, or the townhouses, excuse me. I forget his name, however.
I think in the past, we've, we've always asked for sidewalks.
Yeah.
On, on anything, on 235, northbound or southbound. In a lot of cases, I just think, well, where the car dealership is, there's some places along there, homes that are still there and for sale that don't have sidewalks, but, but they're gonna be asked for them, you know, when they, when they get there. So, I mean, it's, until they get that mess cleaned up, I mean, they're gonna be asked. We've always asked for sidewalks, so I'm just leaving it at that.
We just don't want people walking out in the road.
Yeah. And if, if that being the case, if, if you didn't have sidewalks, then where the kids gonna stand when they go out to get on the bus? They gonna stand...
I was thinking at least we would do sidewalk to the north.
Yeah.
I was, yeah.
I would think they should be left on there. I would think the sidewalks should be left on the plan.
Yeah, well, we've done that to every other applicant that's come before us, so... Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Is there anybody else that wants to speak this evening? Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and close it, the public, close public testimony. You've more or less rebutted everything from, from the two people here, so we'll close that part and then open, close testimony and begin board deliberations unless there's any questions that you need to ask the applicant. Unless there's any questions that you need to ask the applicant. And if you, and if we haven't brought it up before, I will warn you, I might have to open up public testimony again if it's further information, then. Go ahead.
These homes, uh, are they going to be rentals? Are they going to be bid to sell?
I believe right now the plan is for, uh, for-sale lots.
Okay, so it is fair to say that these are going to be working-class homes that are going to serve armed service members, tradespeople, nurses, middle-class homes?
I would think so. I mean, I can't, I don't know that I can testify to that, but it's going to be, you know, typical townhome development in that, you know, price range.
Does anybody have any?
Would, would you go over again exactly how you're working out with the St. Mary's County school system? The bus stop, in other words, there's, you're still stopping, you're not putting in a lane for that bus to pull over exclusively for the bus. They're, the buses are going to be out in the middle of traffic, correct?
Well, we've kind of given them the option, Mr. Brown, um, and when I spoke to St. Mary's a couple of.
I'm thinking they do.
Sorry. So I think the plan as it stands now gives them the option. Uh, we've extended the shoulder for the complete length of the property so that if they make the decision to pull off completely out of the travel lanes, that is a possibility. My discussions with St. Mary's County Public Schools is that they typically do, they stay in the farthest right travel lane with lights on to stop traffic. But he said that, that would be a decision that they would have to look at, and he wouldn't, kind of wasn't sure which way they would go.
And who were you speaking with at St. Mary's County?
It was Joseph Lombardi, I can't, Lombardio, uh, with St. Mary's County Public Schools Transportation Division.
Okay, but it wasn't with the person who provided the initial input?
Uh, he worked for her.
For how?
Sorry?
It's Pam Howe? Not Pam Howe, but, uh.
Uh.
Kim.
Mrs. Howe, that's good enough.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a Howe. Kim, Kim Howe, what am I thinking of? I know in the past, they, the school board has, has, um, not used the sides of the road in order to stop because of people. See a, a bus off on the side of the road with their lights on, there's confusion as to whether they're, why they're stopped, um, no matter what, um. They, they, they stop in a travel lane, one because they want to stop traffic behind them. As I say, if they're off to the shoulder of the road, that's not considered a, a good stop, so they don't do that.
Yes, stopping.
Found that out the hard way, I won't get into that.
I mean, if, if they end up stopping there in the travel lane, it's going to be no different than the rest of Three Knots Road or Point Lookout Road, that's where they stop. They don't, like Howard said, they don't want them on the shoulder. They used to allow them to do that, but it was much, much dan, more dangerous.
They stopped.
So now they stop, like you said, in the right-hand travel lane, whatever.
Farthest right travel lane.
Traveling.
That, that, that way the traffic will stop. If they're on the shoulder or a merge lane, cars in the through lanes don't think they have to stop. So they, the county stopped that years ago, so, which was a good practice, so.
That's one of the biggest hiccups I see. It's not your fault. It's not the applicant's fault or anything, it's just where it's at. And it's, as I said before, um, the difference in between you and the car dealership is, um, D-cell and A-cell. You're on the A-cell side of the world. You know, when they're, they're slowing down to go on the Route 4, it's just what I just said, they're slowing down to go on Route 4. If you drive that traffic, you can see it, you know, people, well, first off, in the evenings, it's usually backed up. But, um, during the day when things are happening, people are slowing down. Whereas when they're coming around on your lane, you got three lanes going north. Well, west, however, going, going up 235, you know what I'm talking about. And then, uh, you also have the Route 4 that merges into it. And if you're looking over your shoulder, you're, you're, you're nailing it because you have to, you have, unless that traffic, unless you see that the traffic stopped at the light. You still have to look because then you have the Route 4, and I'll say, coming from Leonard Town, that, that's entering the, into that intersection, so you still have to look, but it's, uh, it's still, it's still tough, and when you have possibility of a school bus sitting there, or even the possibility of people pulling out there, or people in that, um, I'll still call it the merge lane, um, lane number three, that might be slowing down to pull into this. It's causing some problems, and, you know, I mean, that's just my opinion, I'm, I'm one board member. But, um, that, that's the only, that's the only problem, and that's why we were really looking forward to that, that right-of-way being, being, um, worked out. And that is a shame. Um, I think that right-of-way would work for y'all, I think it would have worked for the people on the corner, and I think it'd actually work for the church, too. Because it would give them a, a different, um, route to come out, you know, when church is over. I don't know how their mass is, but I know where I go to mass. You better be ready to pull out of that parking lot when you get out of there because those people are coming out of there. So, um, that's, that, that's really my issue with, with it, um. You can't pull into the site to pick the kids up. Not only that, I think it's tight, but it's always tight. We did a development right down the street from y'all townhouse. Two miles down the road, I guess, some, something like that. And, um, it was bought up by some board members about the, the, the parking and, and in there, but it was, I won't say that it was overlooked, but it was worked out as best that the applicant could. You did, you'd done everything legally. Uh, you've done nothing illegal, you know, the, the amount of parking spaces needed for that many townhouses is what you got, plus y'all have a few extra. But, um, speaking for myself again, I know there's times where, you know, and it was bought up, somebody has, you know, a birthday party, anything, it doesn't take, doesn't take much of anything. And that's, that's sad when you, you, you know, you're, you're confined, but you're in, you're in a hotspot right there, so. Anybody else have any comments? This is your chance.
I, um, I mean, this is really in a trick box. It's a terrible, terrible situation to be in right now. And I do commend you for going back and fixing the things that we requested, and I think you did an excellent job with that. But looking at, uh, the requirement that we have to go with, it's 60.6.4. Again, the number one, when, number one requirement that we are supposed to look at is, will this promote the health, safety, and welfare of the general public? While I do agree with Chairman that, um, the school bus situation is the number one priority. That is the number one priority, however, that intersection is going to get backed up regardless. I don't, I'm not a traffic control person, but I drive, I drive this road every day, and it's going to be backed up. There's no way that I could vote for this tonight.
Anybody else have any comments?
Well, I guess I have to say that if I, considering my vote on a previous, on a piece of property on the other side, I don't see how I can support this one. Again, it's a safety issue. You're dealing with elementary school, middle school, and high school. And we all know those little six- and seven-year-olds start playing tag, and the next thing you know, they're in the middle of something. I, I just, I'm sorry, I just can't support this particular item from that safety reason. You can talk about the being on 235. It was down the road where it was like opposite where the, uh, Shaw place is, where it's a long, or the Dodge Hodges, where she got a long view and everything else, you can see the school bus and everything else. But you're dealing with something on this corner with people just whipping around the corner, and we all know that's just asking for a problem. So I, I just, I look at it from a safety issue, completely.
Is there anybody else?
I only have one thing to say, and it's that, um, the county, the state, a lot of people that sets these rules and regulations has put you in a trick box. You've done everything according to the rules. But the rules still present that we have a safety issue here. We can't fix that. It's going to take some time to fix that. Re-legislate it, I don't know. But I, I am definitely worried about, uh, the impact of that intersection and what's going to be coming out of the townhouses that are there. Just going to matter of increasing the impact at that intersection. I can't see how it cannot. Going to the sidewalks. If the buses did pull into that, um, shoulder lane, uh, whether you had, if you didn't have sidewalks there, where would they stand? It'd be in the bushes on someplace else. That's one of the things that we do require in St. Mary's County. You see it every business. We want you to put sidewalks in. Years ago, Great Mills, and the county spent a great deal of money going back and moving utilities and everything else to put sidewalks in. And we made that promise that we would not put that burden back on the county and the county taxpayers. That it's your development, you're the one that's, you know, moving it forward, you're the one that's going to reap the benefit and the profits from it. So therefore, don't expect the county to pay for your sidewalks and later on, and you said you would put it back in. My biggest issue is, is safety. The other thing is, is that I don't know what else the land could be used for, um, that doesn't have that big of an impact. I'm just very concerned about the, the impact on safety, that's all.
Doesn't the applicant right now have a, um, a use for that property that they can, that came before us a while back?
For one of the parcels, correct?
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, what'd you say?
A while back, that this applicant had come before us, um, they were going to have, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm sorry, I think that they were selling, um, trailers.
Farm implements, right?
Farm implement, trailers type of thing.
Whatnot.
They have permission on one of these lots to do that.
Is, is it closed right now? Are we able to speak? Am I, could I give like one last little discussion, or is it closed?
It's closed, Mike, I'm sorry. All right, is anything else, anybody else? Would anybody like to do a motion?
If I can find it, I'll do the motion. Someplace.
Yes, go to, go to your staff report.
No, I'm looking in there.
And on page. On page nine of your staff report, under conclusion.
I'll commit if she can't find it.
I'll make a motion. In the matter of concept site plan numbers, CSP 24-0018 Riverside Townhouse Development, having accepted the staff report and having made a finding that objectives of section 60.6 of a comprehensive zoning ordinance have not been met, I move that the concept site plan be appro, not be approved, not be approved.
Okay. Second. All right, I have a motion from Ms. Delahay, and a second from Mr. John Brown. And discussion on the motion. Okay, I'll do roll call vote. Uh, Mike Brown?
No.
Now, when you say that, I just need to note, are you agreeing with her motion?
I agree with the motion.
Okay. Just say, just say, if you would, on this one, agree or disagree. And you agree with the motion?
I agree with the motion.
Okay, thank you.
So it's agreeing, he's agreeing to turn it down?
He's agreeing to turn it down.
Okay.
Agreement means turning it down. It's a little backwards, but that's how I am. Mr. John Brown?
I agree.
Okay. Mr. Cousineau?
Disagree.
Okay. Mr. Van Kirk?
Disagree.
Mr. Sinclair?
I agree.
Ms. Delahay?
Agree.
Okay. I presume I know where y'all are going next. That's all I got to say. Okay, thank you, Mr. Kudjaski. You gave it, gave it everything you got, and you did well. There's just, you have one, one big issue according to four of the board members, and that's location and safety.
Did you vote, Howard?
I don't have to unless it's, I'm breaking a tie.
He breaks the tie.
It wasn't 3-3?
No, it was 4-2.
Miscounted, sorry.
Excuse me?
I miscounted.
Okay, I can give you, uh, Mr.
Got it, it's all good.
Both Mr. Browns voted against or, or for, to turn it down, Mr. Sinclair and Ms. Delahay, Mr. Cousineau and Mr. Van Kirk.
Very good, thank you.
Differently, okay. Thank you, sir. Randy, you had, um, something you wanted to bring up to, on the new business?
Yep, I have a quick update regarding the comp plan. I'm just going to put the the website up here. It's up and running. Okay. So we need volunteers. We're working on, um, putting together a team to help spread the word about the comprehensive plan. It's our hope that members of the community engagement team, that's what we're calling it, will be able to tap into their existing contacts and encourage team, encourage them to attend the public engagement events and activities. We anticipate getting support from larger organizations such as SMECO, Chamber of Commerce, um, College, Board of Ed, et cetera. But we'd also like to tap into small businesses, um, HOAs, churches, um, civic organizations. Or, you know, organizations like that. We have three community engagement, um, team meetings scheduled in December. Tuesday, December 3rd, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Oh, hang on.
Okay, I'll wait for you. Tuesday, December 3rd, 6:00 to 8:00 at the Loffler Senior Center. Do you know where that is? You want the address? Well, I'm going to give you the address for everybody listening. 21905 Chancellor's Run Road. The second one is Wednesday, December 4th, that's 2:00 to 4:00, and that's at the Leonard Town Library.
What was, where was it again?
The Leonard Town Library is the second one. Yep, and that's 2:00 to 4:00. And then it, in the coming days, that'll all be posted to the, um, comprehensive plan website as well. Then the third one will be December 5th, 6:00 to 8:00 at the Northern Senior Center, and that's 29655 Charlotte Hall Road. So during each of these community engagement team meetings, we'll be providing an overview of the project, and we'll be asking for ideas on how to meaningfully engage with the community. That's my update. Oh, and also, the director will be here at the December 9th meeting with more updates to the comp plan.
Considering we have the, one of the presses here, I just wanted to make sure you also get ahold of Al Daley at the County Times.
Say that again?
Al Daley is the managing editor for the County Times. I've got his number, I can give it to you.
Oh, that would be great.
But, and you've got Southern Maryland News sitting right there, so.
Perfect, excellent, and you've just got all that information. Excellent, perfect, perfect.
Thank you, Mike.
Hey, and make use of this website.
Are you going to be willing to come out to groups or organizations to brief also?
To brief?
Yeah, as you were talking about different organizations.
So.
Is that one of the, the ideas of trying to get the impact out there?
Right, we're, we're gonna, that, that's the goal.
I didn't know if you're going to just kept it to these public things, or you're going to reach out to different organizations and do briefs at their meetings, that kind of thing. I just didn't know. I just, maybe you haven't thought about it.
I will get, I, yeah, I will get that information for you.
Okay.
But that seems logical.
I guess the main thing is for people to check back with the, uh, website for the, for any additional information as it comes out, it goes on the website, correct?
Right, absolutely, so keep checking it, and these dates will be up there with the Times and the, um, address as well.
Can you email each one of the commissioners? And that way, I've got a list of emails that all I've got to do is send out those dates.
Oh, sure. Yep.
The Optimus Club, I mean, I've got the 100s, we've got 300 or 400 people there, 500 on the other side.
Oh, absolutely.
All I've got to do is hit forward, and it'll go out to them, letting them know about the comprehensive plan.
Perfect.
I think it's imperative that we get the community involved, because-
I agree.
We're out here every day, and people are saying, oh, I don't want this, I don't want that, but unless they get engaged, things will happen.
Yep, so this, this would be perfect.
This is the perfect venue for them to voice their concerns.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
From my opinion, the group needs to show how this will evolve on down, until all of a sudden, you're sitting here and-
Right, right.
Both of us are trapped, like we were tonight, okay?
Yep.
So, I mean, people, as we all know, not, not in my backyard is the only time people decide to come out.
That's right.
So we want to get, we want the community to be engaged, yep.
Brandy, one of the other things I would like the community, but this comes into the engineering phase of it, it's like that townhouse that was just here, you don't have enough parking, how wide are the roads, fire department, all of that, but that's not the comprehensive plan.
No, that's the CZO, that's the comprehensive zoning ordinance.
That's the ordinance itself.
That comes, that comes afterwards.
But that's going to, that's going to come out of the comprehensive plan, right?
Okay.
So that's going to be next.
That's the biggest thing I see that's driving a lot of it.
Yeah, because people, people just don't understand, why should they jump in now? And they don't understand how it's going to step down.
We're having some people jump in now because they don't want to know what the feuds are going to be.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it, thank you, thanks for listening to me.
Thank you, ma'am, congratulations on your bump up.
Thank you.
Thank you all, everybody for coming out, and if we don't have anything else, I'll have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second for Ms. Delahay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Thank you.